Hi everyone, this is CA Kausik Mukesh, practicing chartered accountant. I am very happy to interact with you with this tremendous platforming goal mall CA. And today we are going to first discuss about IPCC law and later we will come to the final law paper. So many of you might have many doubts with regard to how to present the paper? And what are the important areas to cover for CA IPCC with regard to the old syllabus and also with regard to the new syllabus? So let me first cover out the old existing syllabus and the syllabus that was now on transition new syllabus. So first let me cover up the old syllabus concepts, the paper will come for hundred marks. Thirty marks will be dedicated to the company law, thirty marks will be dedicated to the business laws. And the balance will be dedicated to the ethics communication. And first let us come to the company law paper. Many of you are asking me the doubts, so what are the areas to prepare first? And what are important from the examination point of view? And yes, that is very much important at the time of examinations, may not be at the time of preparation. So therefore, number one, always our syllabus will be divided into the analysis on a balance sheet. Let us take a balance sheet, balance sheet will have both the assets and liabilities. The liability side, share capital will be there, liability side, debentures will be there. Now, let's try to understand much more clear, share capital will be governed by a chapter called as share capital. Debentures will be governed by an area called as debentures. Let us come to the asset side, the debentures whenever they are issued, they will be secured by a charge again as the assets. So therefore, our syllabus is all about analysis on the assets and liabilities. So, let me tell like this, always concentrate on the following areas when we are coming into the IPCC level. Concentrate on these areas first, number one, share capital, number two, general meetings, number three, prospectus. These three chapters account for substantial portion of our IPCC syllabus. Substantial in the sense, if it comes for thirty-five marks including choice, fifteen to twenty marks will be concentrated. Minimum fifteen, you can guess up, that means the areas that we have to cover first when we are going for the examination. That means the students must be pretty much sure about whether they are clear these areas or not. Number one, share capital, number two, general meetings, number three, prospectus and issue of share capital. Now, number one, share capital chapter will be having subdivisions again. That means share capital, after that allotment of shares, transfer and transmission. Again, I repeat, share capital, allotment of shares and the transfer and transmission. All these three chapters will account for a bundle of, a clear bundle of a big chapter called as share capital. Which comes for eight to thirteen marks in examinations, sometimes it can give you a shock in examination. That the full paper will be like a share capital and yes, it is possible. So therefore, always questions will be concentrated much on share capital chapter because it is having a consortium of three chapters inside. Next one, next starts with the prospectus, very important. People are neglecting certain areas, prospectus chapter will be divided into three parts. Again, I repeat, prospectus chapter will be divided into three parts. Number one, basics of prospectus, that means golden rules for the issue of prospectus. Items to be contained inside the prospectus, when the prospectus need not be issued. All these things will be the first area, these are the general rules. Second one will be the kinds of prospectus, when it comes to kinds of prospectus, there will be five types. Number one, red herring prospectus, number two, deemed prospectus, number three, upbridged prospectus. Number four, shelf and number five, information memorandum. And everyone has to prepare for all the five topics, don't leave anything because examiner has. Examiner will be having a full liberty to ask any question in examination. And most of you are asking me any presentation tips etcetera, I will come to that later. So let me first give you a overview of how to prepare at the time of examination, thereafter I will come there. So, in the prospectus chapter, number one will be the basics, number two he will be covering out the types of prospectus. Number three, the most important area which is a highly neglected area in this chapter. Controversial consequences, which includes criminal liability for misstatement of prospectus. Civil liability for misstatement of prospectus, punishment for fraudulently inducing a person to invest money. Perssonation frauds, all these things will come under the prospectus chapter. So, my dear students, again I am telling the same thing, please don't neglect the chapter prospectus. One, share capital, other prospectus, I will again come back to the share capital chapter. First, listen to the prospectus area, so prospectus area will be broadly classified into three parts, the basics. And the second one will be the kinds of prospectus and third one will be the consequences of contravention. So next one, the third chapter will be the general meetings. It's a very big chapter in comparison with all the other chapters, that means content will be very high but marks are not so great. Generally it comes to five marks, sometimes it can also oscillate to five to eight marks. Therefore, we can guess out a five to eight marks from the chapter called as general meetings. But try to understand that's a compulsory area, without preparing the general meetings, we cannot crack the full company syllabus in the exam. And when coming to the general meetings chapter and I will tell you the parts and the divisions. Number one, again, the basics of general meeting chapter, which covers out essentials of a valid general meeting. Quorum, proxy, chairperson, minutes, all these things will come under the basic topics on the general meetings. Number two will be the resolutions, resolutions represents not ordinary and special resolution. Students are generally leaving certain areas like, students are generally leaving certain areas like. Resolutions requiring special notice, extraordinary general meeting and certain other areas. And number three will be types of voting systems and miscellaneous aspects. Poll methodology, vote by show of hands and after that electronic voting. And at the end of this video, in every chapter, I will be giving out certain important questions. Important in the sense, we have to give some importance to that area, that doesn't mean that others are unimportant, interpret the words properly. Yes, could you tell me the weightage of general contract clauses or everything I will tell you? First, let me cover out the areas and next one, when it comes to the share capital chapter. It's very, very important because it cover out substantial portion of our syllabus as I already told. Number one, the most of the topics that will be asked from share capital chapter will be on buyback. After that, this attempt, heavy chances are there for three types of questions. Keep it in mind, any of these three questions can come in examination for this attempt. Number one, issue of shares with differential rights, keep it in mind, get it printed. Issue of shares with differential rights, it has lot of chances to come in exam. And second one, and the second area will be reduction of share capital. Keep it in mind please, reduction of share capital, one of the most important area for this attempt. And the third one will be the rights issue, rights issue will be another area which is more important. However, rights issue was already asked in the previous examination, but that doesn't mean that it cannot be asked again. Again, there are chances, so therefore, rights issue, issue of shares with differential rights and thereafter. The buyback and reduction of share capital, so these are the important areas which we need to cover out in the share capital chapter. And again, I mean, share capital chapter is not an individual topic, it contains three subtopics again. One being the share capital, other being the transfer transmission and third one will be the allotment. And again, in allotment chapter, in the allotment chapter, underwriting commission is an important area. And second one, the most important area is effects of an irregular allotment, so please don't leave these areas. Effects of irregular allotment and another question will be underwriting commissions. But irregular allotment is one of the most important area for the exam, so please see that answer before go to exam. Next one, when it comes to the transfer transmission chapter, the questions will be very much be asked from the areas called as. Forged transfer and from the blank transfers, forged transfer and blank transfers. And there is a third question called as refusal to transfer in case of public private companies. And be sure that you are covering those areas and again, in an actual, I can repeat like this. Share capital, general meeting, prospectus, these three chapters account for the substantial portion of our syllabus. Later, we will keep turning out to the next area. Another three areas are there which are very important from the examination point of view. Which are generally neglected by the students community will be debentures, charges, deposits and membership. Four chapters are there totally, again, right somewhere else, number one, debentures, number two, deposits, number three, charges. Number four, membership, definitely you will get minimum of five to eight marks from these chapters. These chapters are very small, which can be covered in a single day if you prepare well and which gives you five to eight marks for sure. Four chapters again, I repeat, debentures, public deposits or deposits, charges and after that, the next area will be membership. And in the past attempt and the before past attempt, question was asked from membership. In the previous attempt, question was asked from the deposits, so clearly listen. Every attempt, students are losing five to eight marks just because of four easy chapters called as debentures. Deposits, charges and membership, so these are the areas. Next one, let us come to the preliminaries on the company's act, the preliminaries will be covering out the following areas. Number one, preliminaries will be covering out the nature of a company, kinds of company and after that promotion and incorporation. In the nature of company, needless to say, everyone has a good knowledge about what is a company etcetera etcetera, all these things. So I don't want to cover those areas, next one will be the types of companies. In types of companies, students generally neglect some areas like dormant company, nithi company. And holding subsidiary associates, so these are the areas which are the three important areas. So please don't neglect these areas, number one, nithi company, number two dormant company, number three, holding subsidiary associates. These are the important areas in those chapters, next one. When we come into the next chapter, promotion and incorporation, the area for the most importance is nature of incorporation and. Conditions for incorporation or procedure for incorporation, you will be given three types of question from this area. Incorporation of a company generally, incorporation of a one-person company, incorporation of a section eight company. These are the three areas, repeating, number one, general incorporation. A spice incorporation or integrated process of incorporation, whatever the case may be. The fast track incorporation process as brought out by the amendment or you can also expect a question from the one-person company. And we can also expect a question from the section eight company incorporation. These are the three very, very important areas and thereafter the fourth question that can be asked will be preliminary contracts. Also called as a pre-incorporation contracts, so that is one of the most important area which is often asked in examination. He will always try to confuse from that area, so therefore be careful. So this is all about the company's area, so the company's act is totally partitioned into three parts. Number one, the basic chapters called as the nature of company, kinds of company, promotion and incorporation. And second part will be funding, funding through debentures, funding through deposits. And after that, whenever there is a debt funding, we need to have an asset charge, that will be the next area, three chapters. After the general meetings, share capital, prospectus, membership etcetera, these areas. So this will be covering out thirty marks of our company law and later, we will be covering out the business laws. Business laws will be coming for another thirty marks, I am talking about the old syllabus again, I will be coming to the new syllabus much after. So now, number one, bonus act and gratitude, provident fund, negotiable instruments and the contract. Contract act, three areas are of the utmost importance, which will be as follows. Number one, contract of agency, contract of bailment and pledge, contract of indemnity and guarantee, these are the three areas. Let me tell you some important areas in these chapters, in the chapter called as contract of bailment and pledge. The most important areas will be finder of the lost goods, finder of lost goods will be very important. And next one, duties of the baili, duties of the bailor, rights of the baili, rights of the bailor. He will not ask you directly what are the rights of baili, what are the rights of bailor, he will create a case and he will do that. So, once you read the practice manual, you will find how practically the questions will be asked in examinations through that we can go off. And next one, negotiable instruments and keep sure that negotiable instruments chapter is having some amendments. Section one forty-two, there is an amendment, so therefore, check the amendments before you go to the examination. It is already given in the supplementary material which is given by the institute. So therefore, please make sure that you've gone through all the applicable amendments. So that's one of the, another important point I want to cover, so this is the next issue. And third one, after this, you should be clearing out another chapter called as gratitude. Bonus, gratitude, provident fund, these are the three labor laws that are covered by our syllabus. So, the three labor laws will be bonus, gratitude and provident fund. See every time, five marks, five marks and five marks will be the division, sometimes something can be given for six marks. Sometimes one can be given for four marks, but on an average, you can expect five marks from each chapter. And there will be no love lost in these cases, some chapters are easy, some topics are difficult, no such concept. We have to read the entire chapters, but as far as we are concerned. In the bonus, maximum bonus, minimum bonus, set on and set off, these are certain areas which are very important for the examinations. And I will be making clear, minimum bonus, maximum bonus, set on, set off, bonus in lieu, that means in lieu of the profits. Bonus can be paid sometimes, those areas and for the banking companies, separate provisions are there. For calculating allocable surplus, available surplus, these areas are important for the exam. And next issue, and when we come to the provident fund, provident fund chapter is very huge in this content. It comes for four to five marks in examinations, you should make it show. So, when we come to the ethics communication, communications, certain areas are there which will come in every attempt. Certain areas like interpersonal communication, interpersonal communication, essentials of communication will be another thing. And number one, interpersonal communication and essentials of communication. And later on, after this, we will be having certain chapters like group dynamics etcetera, those areas. So, make yourself sure that you are covering essentials of communication because history is saying that essentials of communication can also come for thirteen marks in exam. The downward communication, upward communication, artificial communication etcetera. So kindness etcetera, all these things will be there in the chapter, so essentials of communication chapter will come for eight to thirteen marks sometimes. And the history says that, it's not an estimation, it has already happened sometimes. So therefore, make sure that you are covering the chapter essentials of communication and later on interpersonal communication. And third one, the most important area which will be understood only if you understood the company's act properly. And that area happens to be the most important in communications chapter and that is none other than the drafting area. Either drafting of the official documents like lease deed, gifted deed, all this. And when come to the articles of association memorandum, partnership deeds, that forms part of the, one of the most important area in the examination. So, this will be the another thing, compulsory one question will come from the drafting, so make yourself sure. And when it comes to the drafting, there will be two types, legal drafting and company drafting. So what is a legal and company drafting, legal drafting includes a gifted deed, sale deed, lease deed, partnership deed, memorandum, articles, notice etcetera. But when comes to the company drafting, it comes to the notice of an AGM, notice of an AGM. Appointment of a director resolution, how to pass the board resolutions, how to pass the general meeting resolutions, all these things. Okay, now, these are the areas here and when it comes to the ethics communication, principles of business ethics, workplace ethics. All these areas are important for the exam, ethics communication generally account for twenty marks in examination, sometimes it can oscillate, we cannot fix with that. Sometimes it is, there is a pretty much chance that it can oscillate, so therefore, this is the examination pattern. And when it comes to the overall examination approach, overall examination approach for the old syllabus, I can tell like this. Important, unimportant will not be there, everything is important but certain chapters are to be given most importance in company's act. Like share capital, debentures, prospectus and in business laws, give much importance to the contract act and other three laws. I mean the bonus, provident fund and gratitude because once you cover these areas, this coverage will take as much time as negotiation management's act generally takes. So therefore, make yourself sure that you are covering these chapters, okay? The next one, choice is just to wipe out your tears, it will not be useful for examination. Make your whole-hearted attempt to attempt all the questions in the examination. Choice will be there, definitely we will be leaving certain questions for choice, if you leave certain chapters. And more than the choice, we have to leave other questions, so therefore, prepare for the fullest extent of the syllabus. Next one, when it comes to the new syllabus, guys, I am shifting now to the new syllabus, please concentrate. I am now shifting on to the new syllabus, number one, the new syllabus has brought out in the company's act. Three important chapters which will be definitely accounting for ten to fifteen marks in your upcoming exam. You can be very much sure that it will come for fifteen. Normally, the company's areas, what I have told for the old syllabus equally applies to the new. And the very important point to learn, three chapters which were there previously in the final law. Were now shifted to the IPCC law, IPCC means I mean the intermediate law paper. New syllabus is having two divisions, number one, company law and number two, economic laws or commercial laws we can call it as. So number one, company's area, whatever the chapters applicable for the old, equally applies also for the new syllabus. And along with that, it has also applied certain chapters like dividends, accounts of company, audit and auditors, okay? Now, when it comes to the dividends, please listen carefully to the topics which I discuss now. Very important, he will ask the questions from section one twenty-three, one twenty-seven. Very, very important areas for the dividends chapter, one twenty-three will be talking about. The topic called as one hundred twenty-three, section one twenty-three, talking about the declaration of dividend, normal payment of dividend concept. So, in that particular area, there will be seven to eight subdivisions again, which are very important for the exam. And again, since it is a new syllabus, I am again going into the section and telling what are the areas that can be asked in examination. Number one, first topic will be normal payment of dividend, that means the division for that section will be like this. Number one, sources for payment of dividend, after the sources for payment of dividend, the next area he can ask is. Payment of dividend in case of inadequate profits or losses, that will be the second area. Number three, he can ask from a area called as mode of payment of dividend and he can ask from an area called as interim dividend. Make sure that you are covering all these four areas, previously these areas are covered by the CA final syllabus. Therefore, with that experience, I am telling you, the areas that will be covered in this section will be sources of payment of dividend. I think you know that, that means from the currency of profits or from the past accumulated profits being the general is of free resource etcetera. And thereafter, partly out of the both and from the money provided by the central government or state government in perseverance of a guarantee given. All these things will be covered in that area and after that, very importantly, the next area to be covered will be. Mode of payment of dividend, paid only in cash or either by cheque warrants or by any other electronic mode that is permissible by the MCA. All these things are there, so make sure four areas to be covered in section one twenty-three. Make sure before you go for the examination whether you have covered all these four areas or not. Guys who are from the new syllabus, please make it sure. Number one, sources of payment of dividend and second one, payment of dividend in case of inadequate profits or loss cases. Number three, interim dividend payment and the last but not the least, mode of payment of dividend. So these are the four areas in one twenty-three, once the dividend is declared, it should be paid within thirty days, okay? So, if it is not paid within thirty days, what could happen, covering by section one hundred twenty-seven, so that is very important. There are five circumstances under which, even though the dividend is not paid within thirty days, consequences doesn't get attracted. Five consequences by operation of law, shareholder has given the instructions but they could not be completed with and same has been communicated back to him. And number three, there is a dispute in receiving the title to the dividends. And number four, there will be a concept called as adjustment to the debt due. And number five, will be any other reason, not just because of the fault of company, all these things will be there. Please check out the practice manual of CA final, please check out the practice manual of CA final. You will find a good questionnaire on the dividends chapter and I repeat, everyone who are writing for the new syllabus, IPCC students. Please make it clear, check the practice manual for the CA final dividends chapter, you will find lot many questions in that area, okay? Very importantly, he will confuse you, so please check out the practice manual with regard to the dividends chapter. Okay, it will be available in our CA website, in the board of studies knowledge portal you will be finding, please download. Check out the chapter called as divisible profits and dividends or declaration and payment of dividends chapter. Next one, third question that can be asked from the dividends chapter will be dividends kept in abeyance, that will be the third area of importance. After that unpaid dividend, I E P F, those are easy areas, once we did, we can get a good grip over that particular area, it's not at all a difficult task. That will be the next one and next one, after dividends, there will be a chapter called as accounts. Accounts chapter will be definitely given for eight marks in your upcoming attempt. Ninety-nine point nine 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 percent in all the possible cases, that chapter will come for eight marks in examination. Which will be covering out certain areas like how to maintain the books of accounts and financial statements. Once the books of accounts are prepared, we can modify that in one thirty, financial statements prepared can be modified under one thirty-one. N F R A newly constitute another one thirty-two and after that accounting standards under one thirty-three. And one thirty-four, the boards report, one thirty-five being the CSR reporting and one thirty-six circulation of financial statements. One thirty-seven will be talking about the financial statements, how to file them and one hundred thirty-eight will be concentrating on the internal audit. These are the areas which are very important for the examinations, as I told you, I covered out the full syllabus on the accounts. But let us go into the areas which he will concentrate and again, students who are going for the new syllabus. Make sure, please download the practice manual for the CA final. Such that you can find lot number of questions on the chapter called as accounts of company which are already given. Because this is a new chapter included into your new syllabus, therefore you need know, you may not find all the questions that can be asked. But in CA final examination, already twenty-five questions were already asked in exams. So please make sure yourself that you have covered out the chapter accounts of company from the CA final area. Download the practice manual with regard to the accounts of company chapter and cover out all the practice manual questions that are already given. Such that you can understand clearly, okay? So that's the next area to cover out. Audit and auditors, I don't want to cover here because it will be anyway covered in your audit syllabus. I will be going into the next economic loss area and the economic loss area will be covering out the following. Number one, the economic loss will be covering out certain areas like, first one, economic loss or commercial loss. General clauses act and interpretation of statutes. Once you read the chapter called as interpretation of statutes, once you read the chapter interpretation of statutes. General clauses act will become more simpler, interpretation of statutes, my dear students, again I want to repeat the same thing. It is also borrowed from the final syllabus which is previously there. So final old syllabus, there is a chapter called as interpretation of statutes. That chapter is now brought out to the new syllabus for the I P C C law. Therefore, please again download the chapter interpretation of statutes from the institute website. Such that you will be making sure that you covered all the important areas. When it comes to the interpretation of statutes chapter, the following are more important. Number one, interpretation of statutes covers out the following areas. Number one, the areas of a prime importance will be. Primary rules of interpretation and secondary rules of interpretation. Primary rules of interpretation include automatically six types of interpretation. Number one, rule of literal construction, rule of reasonable construction, rule of harmonious construction. Rule of beneficial construction, rule of exceptional construction and the rule of adjusted generous. So make yourself sure that you are covering out all the areas in this, what are more important for the examination? From the examination point of view, he will be asking mostly from two areas. One is a beneficial construction, other one is harmonious construction and sorry, the third one will be the exceptional construction. Adjusted dim generous is such a area which will be asked sometimes but not frequently. So make yourself sure that you are covering three areas like harmonious, beneficial and exceptional. You can shoot your doubts now on the economic laws or interpretational statutes. You can start shooting your doubts. If you have any doubts on interpretational statutes, the new topic that was introduced. The next one. You have the chapter called as contract act, but it was really very good syllabus for you because it was relaxed. At the old syllabus I P C C, they need to cover the full C P T syllabus plus three chapters. But now you are given a relief from those areas. You need to cover only the areas which are required for. Five I P C C syllabus peculiarly covering on the contract of agency, billment template, indemnity and guarantee. These are the areas we need to cover first, okay? In that, I told you already for the old syllabus, same topics are important even for you. You can roll back to the video and you can see what are the important areas that I told for the old syllabus and then you can come back. Next issue. Negotiable instruments act is another chapter that was introduced, same applicable for the old and new. Number three will be the general clauses act and interpretation of statutes. Both are two bundled chapters. Once you read the chapter interpretation of statutes, immediately we can have a cut through the chapter called as general clauses act. So, if you have any doubts on interpretation of statutes, I will be here. I will be here. You can now shoot up with your doubts with regard to the company law area and business law area and I will be waiting for you. Please shoot me with the doubts. Any presentation tips? Okay. So whenever we are presenting, check first, question is given for how many marks? So questions will be generally given in I P C C for two marks, three marks, five marks. And sometimes six marks. Generally, it will be stopped by five. So generally, I am talking about. It can start from a minimum of two marks, it can end up to five marks in a total. So therefore, at I P C C level, he will be expecting from you to write the basic interpretation of the section. That means you should be able to write. For example, I can give you certain examples how to write. For example, in the new syllabus or the old syllabus, there is a chapter called as share capital. Let's take a question called as. For example, take a question like quorum. He will give a question like this. A meeting started. After twenty-five minutes or thirty minutes or forty-five minutes, only two members are there. It is a private limited, it is a public limited company, having twenty-five members, like this he will ask. Don't directly come and jump into the solution by giving there is no quorum. First, we should be writing the basic provision. That means quorum means. Minimum number of members that must be present in order to commence a meeting. Quorum should be checked at the beginning of the meeting and not thereafter. Number three, quorum for the public and private companies. Quorum for a private company shall be restricted to two. Since the number of members are two, minimum number, you cannot keep three. So, that's the whole idea. Number two, quorum for a public limited company shall be restricted to as follows. You have to write the clear table format. If the company members are of two thousand, thousand to five thousand, more than five thousand. And then write the slab limits also. Once you write the slab limits, thereafter analyze the question that was given. In the question he has given that the company is having twenty-five members. He is coming at the slab number two, sorry slab number one. Now check out how many persons are required in order to constitute a valid quorum. Five members personally present. In the question he has given that only two members or three members are personally present. Since the requisite quorum is not presented at the meeting. The quorum is absent and therefore meeting cannot be held. It has to be adjourned. If it is a meeting by requisition of the shareholders, that means a section hundred, the meeting will be cancelled. That means our answer when it is given for five marks. Students again make it clear, when the question is given for five marks in the examination, this is the pattern. Number one, write the facts of the case. Facts represents a brevity in the facts. Don't do nonsense in examination by writing entire question once again. So therefore, write the full answer. Okay, but don't repeat the question. That means the question should be brief. For example, quorum etcetera, he has given a full paragraph. Don't replicate the paragraph and waste the time. Only one fact. Facts are number one. Fact number one, company held a general meeting. Only two members are present. It is a public limited company. Analyze the situation, that's all. Now apply the section, section, application of the section. So answer section you have to write. Application of the section. Write the application of the section and write the provision. After that, apply that provision. To the case that was given in the examination and then write the conclusion. Your answer should be confined into three parts when it is given for five marks. Introduction, that means the facts of the case. Number two, after the facts of the case, you will be going into the applicability of the section and how the. Section want to convey, you have to write and replicate the section content. After that, apply the question to that particular section, write the conclusion. You will definitely get the five marks. Always make it short. First one with the facts of the case. But don't waste the time in writing unnecessary facts. Don't use creativity in examination, okay? Next, number two will be application. That means write down the section if you remember fully and then apply. And after that, the third one happens to be, third one happens to be conclusion. Apply that and give the conclusion. This is how the examination paper should be presented. When the question is given for three marks, how to write? Don't write anything other than conclusion. Take that question, whatever the question he has asked, apply the provision, give the conclusion. Don't waste time in writing the facts again. When it is given for three marks, give respect only for the three marks. Don't write entire answers for ten marks or fifteen marks like that. Don't write all the pages, don't fill up the pages, okay? Filling up of pages will not give you the marks in examination. So that's another area I want to cover up. Next one, could you tell me the weightage of general contract clauses? I didn't understand your question, Mister Shivanand Yadav. You want me to explain the general clauses act or contract act, I didn't understand. Presumably, it is general clauses act. If this is general clauses act, it will be coming for five to six marks in examination. But you should be pretty much sure that you have completed the chapter called as interpretation of statutes before we read with the general clauses. General clauses is having a heavy linkage with the chapter called as interpretations. So, interpretation of statutes is an old syllabus concept in the final level. As I usually teach for C F final, so I will be telling that there are two types of topics in interpretation of statutes. Primary rules and secondary rules and drafting, three parts rather. Drafting, okay type, but you should be make it very, very sure before going for examination that you are. Very much confident with two parts called as primary rules of interpretation, secondary rules. Primary rules will be covering out the literal and reasonable beneficial, harmonious, exceptional and adjusted generous. In that, four topics are very important. Beneficial, harmonious, exceptional and adjusted generous. For your examination, please check harmonious and exceptional and go to exam. Don't leave these two areas. Harmonious and exceptional, I am making it again. So harmonious and exceptional, don't leave those, okay? So that is very important. Next issue. After that, our next area of consideration will be totally dependent on this. Tips for writing the answers. As I already told you, your answer should be confined in, it will be dependent on the. Marks that is given, okay? So make it sure that you are writing in accordance with the marks that were awarded for that. Section numbers, hi sir, please share some techniques to remember the section numbers. Apurva, hi ma'am, you need not write the section numbers in the examination. Needless to say that, for section numbers and all, he will not give you any marks. If you write the section number, he will not award you one mark. If you don't write, he will not deduct the marks. So make it sure you need not write the section numbers, okay? Maybe a craze will be there. Generally, we need to cover out the section numbers etcetera. That craze is not even required for I P C C level. You need not write the section numbers. So make it sure, don't waste time in remembering the section numbers. Try to make out the time for remembering the content of the section. Don't waste the time in remembering the numbers of the section. If you write the section number correctly and write the content wrong, he will not award you with a single mark. Sir, is it very much required to necessary to reproduce the same language of the material in examination etcetera, etcetera? Okay, Mister Vadiraj, the answer will be not required totally, but don't use creativity, please. Don't use creativity. The point is, we need to write, at least we need to replicate to sixty, seventy percent. It is always very good if you replicate entirely. But if not possible, at least try to replicate sixty to seventy percent of the answer, okay? Next one. Case law names and section numbers not at all required. Don't waste the time again, Mister Sudhichandra. You need not waste the time remembering the section names, section numbers and case learnings. So how to revise the entire syllabus one day before the examination? As I already told you, once you get acquainted with the total syllabus before, it will not be a problem for you. You didn't tell me whether you are from old syllabus or new syllabus, Mister Amit Sat. Presumably, if you are from the old syllabus, please cover more on ethics communication and business laws. Complete the Companies Act before, before, much before. On the day of examination or just before the day of examination, please make it very sure that you are covering out the ethics communication and the business laws. And when it comes to the normal areas, that means I mean, when it comes to the new syllabus area. Make sure that you are confident with the companies area and the contract act, okay? Code in the section numbers is not mandatory. This is all I want to tell, okay? So, thank you very much. Before I close the session, let me extend my. Let me extend my, what to say, I mean I want to tell you some examination tips in an entire way. Number one, don't write unnecessary answers. Make your full hearted attempt to attempt the full hundred marks paper. And remember that it will be, our passing will be fifty percent. That means if you attempt for cent, then it will be fifty percent will become fifty. If you attempt for eighty, ninety marks. Fifty marks will be more than fifty percent. You are increasing the level of your risk. So therefore, please make it sure fifty percent. That means for every hundred marks you attempt, you will get fifty. That's the logic behind the institute. If you are attempting for ninety, fifty will not become fifty percent. For ninety, fifty will become something like sixty, sixty-five percent. Or fifty-five to sixty percent. So you make very much sure that you are covering the entire syllabus in exam. At the time of preparation, you need to do everything. But in examination, make all your whole hearted attempt to make out the full topics that were given in the exam. Right entire syllabus, okay? So this is all I can tell. Here I will close the I P C C session and now I will be coming to the final. So, very importantly for the C F final students, this is our first attempt after the transition. I will be covering out the both new syllabus and old syllabus areas. So listen carefully before we move on with the analysis. Number one, unlike I P C C, our syllabus will be very, very huge. So first one, there will be a link below for C F final students, please listen carefully, there will be a link below. In the Google Drive, you can download that. I have given the analysis of the total paper. The total paper analysis has been given. So what are the areas to be prepared and what are the important areas? In ten questions, your queries will be answered. For C F final students and I am repeating now, number one. First one, know your syllabus first. Like K Y C norms, it is a K Y S norms, know your syllabus. Most of the students are leaving most of the syllabus and they are going for the examinations. First one, they are not learning out the chapters like removal of names of the company, winding up of unregistered companies. Companies to furnish information statistics, Nidhi company, government companies, foreign companies, entire sections are not covering out. So please make very much sure that you are covering entire areas. Number one, our syllabus was hidden by the study material. So therefore, every section is covered by the study material but not like a chapter heading. It was internally included. Therefore, it is an integral part of our syllabus. So please make very much sure. That you are very much confident with all the hidden chapters like removal of names of companies, winding up of unregistered companies, miscellaneous provisions of companies act. Registration offices and fees rules, companies to furnish information statistics and next one, special courts, penalties, offenses. All these things you have to cover before the exam. Next. You can download the link, you can download the document that was attached to the link below. Link is there below, you can download that and see. Our syllabus for the C F final level is totally branched into four parts. Part one will be the directors and board of directors. Part two will be the grievance redressal. Part three will be the other aspects and part four will be on the allied laws. Number one, when it comes to the directors and board of directors and I want to make it very, very clear, please try to understand. People are reading the directors' concepts and board of directors' concepts and thinking that it is the whole world. There is much more world to see in the Companies Act and make it sure. The directors area will be covered from section one forty-nine to section two not five. Our syllabus will be from one forty-nine to section four hundred seventy. That means try to understand, almost three times of the directors syllabus is there still pending. Sir, I have given you the pattern in the link that is given below. Please download that link and check out the facts. C F final law paper is not like before. That means traditional areas are not given in the examination. Traditional areas in the sense directors and board of directors, yes, they are important. If you can check the past five atoms question papers. Why the law paper is becoming more difficult? The only area is, the only area, the only reason. Where the students are getting failed, they are not covering the entire syllabus. Rather, they are not knowing that. Some chapters are there in the syllabus. They will be shell shocked in the examination directly. So please, first one, let me give you the chapters what are applicable for the examination. You can download the. Document that was linked to the drive given below. Directors and board of directors will be covering from section one forty-nine to section one seventy-two. And one seventy-six after it will continue and one seventy-six to section two not five. That will be covering out the directors area, which will be covering for fifteen to twenty marks in exam. And again, remember carefully, from the past analysis of the examinations I have been telling you. Directors and board of directors will account for a maximum of twenty marks. That means if the paper comes for one hundred twenty, directors and entire directors area will be coming for twenty marks in examination. Still, there is a hundred marks paper that is pending. Final students, I think you are listening. Know the facts behind the law paper. Why it is becoming more difficult every attempt? Number one, questions are concentrated more on the grievance redressal. Grievance redressal means what sir? Grievance redressal includes the following chapters. Inspection inquiry investigation. Students, please check the last item to question paper. Inspection investigation chapter. Has covered for eighteen marks with the four questions. People are not even understanding that it came from investigation chapter. Actually, in the previous examination, a question was given from section two twenty-seven, sorry, two twenty-six. Investigation proceedings not to stop the winding of proceedings. People thought that question was given from the winding of chapter. That means students are not even understanding from where the questions are coming. Just because of the mere reason that the concentration is given only on the directors which comes for twenty marks. So therefore, check all the previous examination papers if you have the time. Or else I have already given the analysis on the link below. See there, directors and board of directors put together will come for twenty marks at the maximum, including choice paper comes for one twenty. That means there is at more hundred marks syllabus to cover. Those chapters are, number one. Those chapters are, number one, listen carefully. Number one, inspection, inquiry, investigation will definitely come for five to eight. Compromises and arrangements, I am telling those students, definitely one eight marks question will come from this for this atom, ninety-nine point nine nine percent possible. Very, very important chapter for this atom, please make very much sure you have covered the full chapter compromises, arrangements and amalgamations. Especially, I have given the important areas to cover for May eighteen examinations in the link below. You can download that, you can see there, I have given the expected questions. Those are only mere expectations from my side, that may not be true from the institute's side. But as a faculty, I will assume something, so these has to come, these are the difficult areas. If those comes, you should be in a position to write the entire paper. So please listen carefully, the point what I want to make it very short. More than directors, there are many areas to cover in the Companies Act. And those includes inspection, inquiry, investigation, starts from section two not six, end with section two twenty-seven, almost there will be twenty-one sections. Compromises, arrangements start from two hundred and forty, end with section, sorry, two hundred thirty, end with section two hundred forty, eleven sections are there. After that, prevention of oppression, mismanagement, students, this attempt, make very much sure you are covering the concept under the prevention of oppression, mismanagement. I can tell like this, get it printed in your brain, listen carefully, number one. Compromises, arrangements and amalgamations, oppression, mismanagement, inspection, inquiry, investigation. These three chapters will definitely come in examination for fifteen marks. Make it sure that you are covering these chapters before you go to examination. Compulsory question in examination, if not given, no problem, if it is given, you should be in a position to write. Therefore, make very much sure that you are covering three chapters, the trio for our syllabus, the most important, the heart and soul of the company syllabus, inspection, inquiry, investigation, compromises, arrangements and prevention of oppression, mismanagement. These are called as grievance redressal sections. Grievance redressal, grievances of mergers, grievances of frauds, grievances of the oppression will be resolved under these chapters. And grievance redressal doesn't end there, the other chapters under the grievance redressal will be NCLT and NCLAT. And next one, offenses, prosecutions, penalties and special codes, which starts from section four thirty-five, ends with section, ends with section four hundred forty-four, and it may continue up to four hundred forty-six sometimes. So therefore, listen carefully, offenses, prosecutions, penalties and special code chapter will be coming for five marks. Removal of names of the company from the register will be coming for four marks for this atom. Presumably, these are my estimations, it should come rather, because these are important from the examination point of view. And later, number three will be, NCLT, NCLAT will be more important. And again, NCLT, NCLAT means, don't read that chairman, age of chairperson, qualifications for chairperson. All these childish questions may be asked, may not be asked in examinations, but there are certain other areas called as assessment procedures under the Companies Act. Like the validity of the resolutions passed in the NCLT and NCLAT. Validity of the resolutions passed in the NCLT, the decisions taken by the NCLT and NCLAT because of the miscomposition. And after that, we have to go into the other area called as civil court's power to be barred because of the constitution of NCLT, NCLAT. All these things, many other areas are there, in this, we cannot cover the full syllabus, but I can tell you one thing. NCLT, NCLAT, rather than concentrating more on the age of chairperson, you have to read everything. But rather than concentrating on the age of the chairperson, qualifications, read the procedural aspects of the Companies Act. Like appeals, orders of the court, orders of the NCLT under section four twenty, appeal second as orders of NCLT under four thirty, four twenty-one. And after that, expeditions disposal of the appeal under section four twenty-two, appeal making to the directory to the Supreme Court on a question of law. And after that, the Limitation Act applicability and contempt of court given by the NCLT, NCLAT. These are the areas which he will concentrate to ruin our life in examination. So make it sure that you are covering those difficult areas. Small areas like directors etcetera, everyone will cover. Try to understand, analyze the question papers properly that are given, institute has made a paradigm shifting giving the question papers. Directors are given only for twenty marks in examination. The remaining chapters will be the procedural compliances, you can take the past exam question paper or the previous five items question paper, you can check that. The syllabus is heavily concentrated on the grievance redressals and assessment procedures on the Companies Act. So this is the next area. Part two, I am talking about the chapter's name, again, listen carefully. Inspection, inquiry, investigation, compromises, arrangements and amalgamation, oppression, mismanagement and NCLT, NCLAT, special courts and removal of names from the register, winding up of unregistered companies. Winding up of unregistered companies, another very important chapter for the exams, winding up of unregistered companies. Messliness provisions of the Companies Act and e-governance under the Companies Act. And companies to furnish information statistics, okay? These are the areas which have to be covered under the grievance redressal. After that, part three, part three are the other areas of the Companies Act, like dividends, accounts, audit. Types of companies are there, students, please listen carefully, there are five types of companies under the Companies Act. People are thinking that only foreign company and government company producer company are there. Another two provisions are there called as dormant company under four fifty-five, Nidhi company under section four zero six. Nidhi company will be having eight questions, dormant company will be having seven questions to cover. So please cover those fifteen questions before you go for exam. Dormant company is becoming a crazy area for the examiner. Every two to three items he is giving, the dormant area. So make yourself sure that you are reading dormant company, you are in the Nidhi company area. Foreign company, listen carefully, the name of the chapter is not foreign company, my dear students. The name of the company is not foreign, name of the chapter is not foreign company, you are making wrong, the name of the chapter is Companies Incorporated Outside India. But the general tradition in the student community is becoming like foreign company, there is no concept called a foreign company chapter under Companies Act. It is Companies Incorporated Outside India. In the Companies Incorporated Outside India, one of the area will be the Foreign Company Incorporated under section two clause forty-two. So therefore, in Foreign Company chapter, there are certain areas to cover. Number one, the definition of Foreign Company under section two clause forty-two. And thereafter, section three seventy-nine has already been given in the past examination, therefore, give less importance to that and give more importance to the other areas. Sir, what are the other areas to cover? Other areas to cover in the Foreign Company chapter will be, starting from section three eighty-seven to ending up to three hundred ninety-three. Ninety-nine point nine nine percent, this attempt, this attempt, question will come from section three eighty-seven to section three ninety-three. So make yourself sure that you are covering those areas, okay? Three eighty-seven to three ninety-three, three eighty-seven to three ninety-three means it will be covering out the prospectus area, three eighty-seven, three eighty-eight, three eighty-nine and three ninety, three ninety-one, three ninety-two, three ninety-three will be on the consequences of contraventions in the incorporations outside India being the companies. So make yourself sure that you are covering those areas. Number three, after this, other areas will be there, the other areas includes the following. So again, I am making it sure, there are four parts in our syllabus. Part one, directors and board of directors coming for twenty marks in examination as a whole. Grievance redressal and assessment procedures under the Companies Act coming for twenty-five to thirty marks in exam. Part three, other areas like dividends, accounts, board meetings, types of companies, all this will come for another twenty marks in exam. Making a total of sixty to sixty-five marks or seventy marks of the company syllabus. Allied laws, listen carefully, for the allied laws, I can tell like this. Always, our allied laws are divided into three categories, I am talking about the old syllabus. Allied laws are divided into three categories. Category number one, capital market allied laws. What are that capital market allied laws? Capital market allied laws will cover SCRA and SEBI, which comes for generally minimum of ten to twelve marks in exam. And I am making it very much sure again, capital market allied laws which will be covering out, which will be covering out, ten to twelve marks in exam, containing SEBI and SCRA. Second partition will be institutional allied laws. That means allied laws having a link with the banks and institutions like Banking Regulation Act, Insurance Act, Surfrisi, PMLA and none other than the Insolvency and Bankruptcy Code, that will be the another area. That means institutional allied laws will be covered into five parts. Part number one will be the institutional allied laws covering out the first area called as Banking Act, Insurance Act, PMLA, Surfrisi, IBC, these are the five chapters. Make it sure, these five chapters will be covering out twenty to twenty-five marks of your total syllabus. Surfrisi is a confirm question, PMLA is a confirm question, IBC is a confirm question. If these three comes for five five marks each, take a worst case scenario, it will be covering about fifteen marks for you. And these areas are very small in coverage, IBC is very, very important, okay? Prepare well for the IBC. And the final students may not be online now, you can shoot up with your doubts later, if the time permits, we can answer for that. But the areas of the utmost importance will be, number one, Surfrisi, PMLA, bank, sorry, Surfrisi, PMLA, banking and after the insurance and IBC. Make sure that you are covering these five areas, which will be covering minimum of fifty, twenty marks in exam, okay? Here comes the new syllabus. For those who are going for the new syllabus, my simple suggestion for you will be, Companies Act area doesn't have any difference because, because new chapters are not included, but the old chapters are deleted now. Old chapters deletion represents, old chapters are deleted, but the new chapters are not included within. So Companies Act, new chapters are not included, but for the economic laws that are included into the new syllabus, one is arbitration conciliation and second one will be after arbitration conciliation, next comes the area called as Foreign Contribution Regulation Act. Very, very important, as institute has already recommended, these two chapters will confirm minimum of twelve marks in examination. Minimum of twelve marks in examination, make it sure. And you can see the weightage given for the directors in the new syllabus, it is giving out twenty-five percent of the total syllabus. And again, make it sure, we should use, we should be very much sure how it should be interpreted. In the weightage section, you can see, directors, board of directors, everything, whatever the community, student community generally talk as directors. The directors' area is covering out twenty-five percent of the total syllabus in the new syllabus also. So twenty-five percent means I will get twenty-five marks, try to understand, twenty-five will be from the seventy. Seventy into twenty-five percent, not hundred into twenty-five percent. So therefore, try to understand that twenty-five marks will also not be coming in examination. That means directors will be given only for fifteen marks in the new syllabus. Then what is important sir, then what is important means, again, my answer will be assessment procedures. You are leaving that for the examination and those are becoming most important areas. So directors will be coming for fifteen to twenty marks at the most in both the syllabuses, the remaining areas will be covering out the heavy thing. Next one, economic laws, in the economic laws for the new syllabus, Banking Act, new syllabus economic laws, Banking Act, Insurance Act, Banking, Insurance and after that, next chapter will be like Banking, Insurance is deleted totally, interpretational statutes deleted and Competition Act is deleted for you. So these areas are not covered in the examination. So you can be very much sure that you need not cover Banking, Insurance, Competition, Interpretational Statutes, but you need to cover Surfrisi, PMLA, FEMA, SEBI, SCRA, Arbitration Conciliation, FCRA. And my simple suggestion for those who are writing for the new syllabus, make yourself sure that you are covering these chapters. Number one, Surfrisi, number two, PMLA, number three, FEMA and number four, the areas that are to be covered will be, number four will be Arbitration Conciliation and FCRA. This is my syllabus analysis on the final, next one. Comments on the practice manual. These comments are applicable for both the IPCC and the final students. Listen to my comments properly on the practice manual issued by the institute. I will be covering ten areas, you can download from the document that was linked below for you, you can download that and you can check out. Comment on the practice manual. Students, please try to understand, practice manual will contain the compilation of the past examination questions. That means if some chapter or some question is not given in the examination previously, that will not be covered by the practice manual. Now, the moral of the story is, if you prepare practice manual and go to examination, we are digging our own grave. So please, don't prepare from the practice manual, practice manual should become a aid for your preparation. That means it should help you in preparing, it should not be the source of preparation. You should read the entire act, when entire act is applicable for syllabus, you should read entire thing. Practice manual will become aid, it will be help you, it will help you, that's all. Once you complete, test your knowledge to practice manual, but practice manual should not become your source of preparation. There is a main reason for general failure of the students in exam, because you can check the past three items law question paper, practice manual is covered only to the extent of twenty percent. So try to understand what is really happening, know the facts. Next one, key aspects to be referred before examinations, very, very important to all the IPCC and final students. Please make yourself sure that you are covering out these three areas before going to exam and mainly for the final old and new. MCA frequently issues notifications. Notifications will be covering the exemptions and non-applicabilities. Those exemptions and non-applicabilities you need to cover, because whenever a section is asked in examination, for example, he will ask you a section from, he will ask you a section from quorum for a board meeting, quorum for a board meeting in CA final. And he will ask, what will be the answer if the company is a sectionate company? Immediately till it should strike you. Exemptions, non-applicabilities and relaxations will be provided through the MCA notifications. If you are not reading, in every five marks question, you will lose two marks. So please make it very, very sure, please download and download the document that was given below in the drive. It will contain the ten queries that have prepared, so key aspects to be covered before exams, exemptions and non-applicability, eligibility criteria. And next one is the penalties, sir, I told you exemptions and all of these you have to prepare and second one will be eligibility criteria. So what is eligibility criteria? I will explain. Whenever a question is given in examination from some committees, women directors etcetera, for example, he will ask you a question like this. X Limited is a company having a paid up share capital of three hundred and thirty lakhs, three hundred and thirty lakhs, he will ask. X Limited is a company having a paid up share capital of three hundred thirty lakhs. Whether it required to form a women director, whether, sorry, whether it is required to have a women director or not. Immediately our answer will be yes, paid up share capital somewhere ahead, it is three thirty, sir, it is three hundred, therefore you will apply that. Or hundred, you will apply that. I am asking the question in lakhs, most of us will listen that as a crore. Eligibility criteria, if you check out properly, women directors' criteria will be given in crores, not in lakhs, he will bluff you like that in exam. That means he will be giving out the numbers in such a manner that, that will make us fools in exam. He will give in lakhs and the answer will be in crores, actually the notification will be in crores. But we will be given in lakhs, but we will remember the numbers rather than the content, that fails you, number one. Always, whenever you are reading the eligibility criteria, check whether N is used or R is used. Sir, what do you mean by that, okay? Which companies are required to have a CSR committee? Number one, company is having a net worth of five hundred crores or more, net profit of ten crores or more, like the turnover of thousand crores or more, shall required to establish a or form a CSR committee. But the fact is, it is R, you need not comply with all the three, you need to comply at least from one of the three. So you should remember, sir, I will remember, sir, because every time R will be used, that's the mistake we will do. In November two thousand fifteen, or May two thousand sixteen, if I am not wrong, a question was asked from a chapter called as Accounts of Company. Which companies are required to make a e-circulation of financial statements? He has given like this, paid up share capital of something, a company is a listed company, listed company, paid up share capital of something and turnover of something, he has given. But the fact is, if it is a listed company, you need not check the limits. Listed companies generally section will apply, every student has committed a mistake. So from today itself, please have a habit of compiling all the eligibility criterias into a single page, okay? Compile every eligibility criteria into a s- single page, write down all the eligibility criteria, hardly it will take you half an hour to complete. Okay, once you complete that, it will be useful for you at the time of examinations. Most of you are asking how to prepare, preparation is not the main problem, not preparing is the main problem. You are not preparing properly, that means we should be preparing in such a manner that we should be in a position to counter the questions given in exam. That means we should know the eligibility criteria, we should have a good knowledge and grip over that. And next issue, after that, penalties, very, very important is the penalties carrying section. Penalties represents the following, penalties means, whenever he asks a question, I will give an example, I will give a example. Loan due directors is a section given in exam. He will ask you entire loan due directors' concept, whether loan is to be given or not given, whether it is given or not given, everything you will give. But at the last, he will ask you for two marks, what are the penalties for contravening the section, that we will remember or that may be forgotten. Once it is forgotten, two marks gone, even though you are very good at the loan due directors' concepts. The so-called directors' area, what we generally call as important, in that important area itself, we are losing the marks, because of not remembering the penalties properly. So make yourself sure that you are covering out all the penalties properly, that's my fourth concern for the exams. Number five, important topics for the May eighteen examinations, so CA final students, please make it sure. Important concepts for the May eighteen examinations, it is already there in the document that was given below, you can check there, you can download that and see. Important concepts for the May eighteen examinations, it is already there in the document that was given below, you can check there, you can download that and see. Time management of the law paper, time management of law paper. Understand and remember carefully, law paper for the CA final will be the fourth paper. That means already you will be with a loaded brains with first three examinations like FR paper. Strategic Financial Management and Auditing and Assurance Paper. You will be already, will be loaded with a full, what to say, the overheated brain, etc., will be there before we start with the corporate law paper. So therefore, try to understand, one day before the examination, maybe you may be typed out, you may not be in a position to read. Therefore, make it very much sure that you are completing the Companies Act fully before you go to the examination. That means try to understand clearly, let us come to the bitter facts. April, sorry, May first or second, if the examination starts, from April twenty sixth onwards, we will stop reading the. Law paper and auditing paper, etc., will be concentrating on the FR paper. Once you start with FR, you will be totally concentrating in that area in such a manner that you may forget the law sections. So that's the main problem. Therefore, retrieval is the main issue here. Therefore, you need to revise N number of times. Please make it very much sure that you are covering all the assessment areas under the Companies Act. That will be very, very difficult for the examinations, you cannot remember. Directors can be remembered to some extent, but these areas cannot be understood, you cannot remember. So therefore, make yourself sure that you are covering all the assessment areas. If you want sir, what is that assessment, assessment, every time you are telling assessment under Companies Act. See the RTP, see the mock test, ninety percent of the paper will run assessments on Companies Act, NCLT, NCLAT, special courts, misledness provisions. Operation, mismanagement, compromises, arrangements, inspection, investigation. And all these removal of names, winding up of unregistered companies, all these areas will be more covered. So therefore, that is the point I want to cover out here. And the next area, time management means cover out the full law syllabus before you go to the April twenty sixth or twenty seven. That means before April twenty sixth or twenty seven, if you can cover the full law syllabus, it will be easy for you to cover the day before examination. Day before examination, keep a clean slate of mind and with the pleasure of writing the three examinations. You have to write the fourth examination with a positive intent to cover that. Next one. Observe the irrelevance in the question, MCA final students, please listen carefully, this is how the papers are prepared in the latest trend. So questions can be asked in two times. Number one, compliance section and reverse compliance. What do you mean by compliance and reverse compliance? I will tell you like this. A company has to hold four meetings of the board in every calendar year. He will not ask you how many, how many meetings are to be conducted in a year, he will give a situation where the company will not comply. And he will make you to write the contraventions. So therefore, another thing, I will tell you an example. Notice of a board meeting will be given by, can be given by the following modes. Post-hand delivery, electronic means, or hand delivery, post-electronic means. This is a mode of sending a notice. Again, I repeat, mode of sending a notice will be hand delivery, post or electronic means. These are the three modes of giving a notice. In an examination, I didn't remember actually, three items back or two hundred of items, two items back or four items back or three items back, I didn't remember actually. Something like May two thousand sixteen item, a good question was asked in exam, a company is there, something like X Limited. It has, in its articles of association, has written clearly that, notice of a board meeting should be given only by a post. And shorter notices should be given by the electronic mode, it was written in the articles. Make clear? So the company has not complied with that, whether valid or invalid, hell with that. The first thing you need to understand, articles provision itself is invalid. When the act itself is giving you a chance of giving a notice in three ways, why the hell articles has to interfere and tell that you should give only in electronic mode? When already you are giving an option, it's optional to given any of the three modes. So therefore, make it sure that's called as irrelevance. Examiner will be concentrating more on irrelevance than on relevance. This is the latest trend in the Companies Act paper. That means he will not ask you the relevant, he will ask the irrelevance area, we need to understand the relevance. So that's another idea. Next one, how to present the paper? I have given in the document that was given below, you can download and see. If the question is given for three marks, no introduction whatsoever, directly comment and advice on the provision given. Next one, if it is given for four marks, give a brief introduction and apply the law to the section. And apply the law to the question and give the conclusion. If it is given for six to eight marks, write the facts, but don't write all the question entirely. Second one, will be explain the relevant section in full, you have to explain the full section first. And later apply the section to the question given and later give the conclusion. Four parts, facts of the case, section content. Application of the section to the question, conclusion, four parts you should be divided. This is the point. Interlinkages with other sections. Sir, what do you mean by this interlinkages? Yes, I will come there. Whenever the loan is given to the directors of a company, it lead to a contravention. Contravention under the Companies Act will go to the special court. That means whenever a contravention under the loan to directors one eighty five gets attracted, immediately, special courts under four thirty five will get attracted. Once the special court, once the special court under four thirty five gets attracted, immediately offenses will be trailed under section four thirty six. Once the offense is trailed under four thirty six, it can be went for, it can be went for the cognizance of offenses under section four thirty nine. Later it will be moving on to the adjudication of penalties under section four fifty four. Later it will turn to the compounding of offenses under section four hundred forty one. That means whenever the contravention under section four hundred, under one hundred eighty five gets attracted, it is an offense. Offenses will be trailed by a special court. Offenses shall be trailed by a special court established under section four thirty five. That means, once the contravention of one eighty five is covered, one eighty five plus four thirty five plus four thirty six plus four hundred thirty nine. Plus four hundred fifty four plus four hundred forty one. All these sections will get clearly attracted. So therefore, contraventions play a crucial role in exam. Whenever there is an offense carrying section, that offense carrying section automatically requires. A combined reading or a conjoint reading with the other sections on the assessment area. This is called as a assessment procedures under the Companies Act. So this is the response to the questions given, okay? Next one, interlinkages, I mean interlinkages. Whenever section one hundred eighty subsection one clause A is given. Remember please students, one eighty one A is given, one eighty one A we should write, explanation one, meaning of the undertaking. Explanation two, meaning of substantially the whole of undertaking, explanation, and next one, one hundred eighty subsection number four has to be written. One hundred eighty subsection three clause A, one eighty subsection three clause B, everything should be returned in order to get the eight marks in examination. Because in the recent mock test paper for the new syllabus, a question was given from the area called as one hundred eighty one A. You have to write one eighty one A, explanation one, explanation two, one eighty three A, one eighty three B, one eighty four, and then you have to stop with the answer. Whenever section one hundred eighty, and again, I forgot to tell, whenever a question is given from section one seventy nine two. Whenever a question is given from section one hundred seventy nine to one hundred ninety five, you should write, it's your imperative. It should be a prerogative for you to write the entire section one seventy nine. Because one seventy nine is a charging section for one seventy nine to one ninety five, board powers. That means the board of directors of the company are entitled to exercise all such powers and to do all such acts and things as the company is authorized to exercise and do. While exercising such power, they shall be subjected to the act articles memorandum, article memorandum of association and articles of association and board resolutions. Resolution, board of directors shall not be entitled to exercise the powers which are required to be exercised by the company in a general meeting. And no prayer act of the, no regulations passed by the general meeting shall invalidate the prayer acts provided is valid if the regulation had not been made. First, we have to write one seventy nine before writing one seventy nine, section one hundred eighty, one eighty one, one eighty two, everything. Remember, whenever a question is given from one hundred seventy nine to one ninety five, make yourself sure that you are giving a good introduction to one seventy nine. Provided the question is given for six to eight marks. If it is given for four marks, no problem. For example, in the previous attempt, six marks, question is given from the charitable contributions. Do you know how the key was prepared by the institute in the key, in the answers? He has given one seventy nine, two marks. No student has written one seventy nine. They are directly jumping to one hundred eighty one. Why you are thinking that one eighty one small section will be given for six marks in exam? For what analysis he will give you six? You should write one seventy nine. The board of directors are entitled to exercise such powers, etc. You should write one seventy nine, one seventy nine one, one seventy nine two, first proviso to one seventy nine one, second proviso to one seventy nine one, and thereafter you should jump to section one hundred eighty one. So this is how you should present, interlink with the other sections and write. Next one, attempting in full, again, I repeat the same thing, try to attempt the full marks. Our pass percentage will be fifty percent in paper, fifty percent, that means in every hundred mark, you have to get fifty. If you are attempting for eighty, fifty marks will become sixty two point five or seventy. So therefore, you are increasing the risk percentage. So therefore, make yourself pretty much sure that you are covering the full syllabus. So this is what I want to convey. So. Here I will close our session for today and I am very, very thankful for. And I am very thankful for the Gold Mall CA for giving me this opportunity to interact with all of you. And I am very thankful for this particular session and all the very best for examinations, keep hard work, keep your hard works always. And always try to attempt for the full paper. So that's what I can suggest you. So please, full preparation is very much required to crack the CA. Exemption is possible only if you prepare. The procedural compliances under the Companies Act, okay? So thank you very much for the opportunity. Okay, okay. Sir, is it compulsory to mention the sections for CA final? Very much yes, for IPCC, no. Any suggestible reference material for corporate and allied laws? Uh, I tell Bay Act always, I have my own publication or you can also go to other popular publications that are available outside. Preparation strategy to cover the full syllabus, strategy itself is to cover the full syllabus. So the preparation strategy for covering the full syllabus represents, we have to cover the full syllabus. So try to understand, don't leave the sections, at least have some knowledge on the syllabus. So these are certain questions, you can also pose certain questions, thereafter, we will give you the answers. Any doubts, you can post it to my email address. Post it to my email address, you can, you can post it to my email address. I am making a comment, that will be my email address. I will be answering you in a day or twice, in a couple of days I will be answering you. It's Kausik Mukesh Ramaraju at rate gmail. If you have any questions, you can post there. I am giving my email address here on the comments. If you really want, you can post it on that. Okay, next one. Next one, I have prepared a question paper covering out the full syllabus, containing all the areas. If you want to write that question paper, it will be again tagged on the Gold Mall CA page only. Gold Mall CA page will tag that, that Gold Mall CA page, you can see the question paper, which will be downloaded. So check that, it will be available in one hour for you, you can check that, try to attempt that question paper, answers will also be available on the Gold Mall CA page. Okay, answers will also be available on the Gold Mall CA page. So thank you very much for this opportunity. Uh, is there any practical questions in IBC? Practical questions represents the questions that are available in the practice manual, then that doesn't cover more. Practical questions in the sense, we have to read the sections directly. Don't forget to read the definitions whenever you are reading IBC. Definitions will be asked in the previous attempt, a question was asked from the definition. That means a foreign person made a complaint, yes, person includes a person resident outside India, under the definitions of IBC. Like that he will ask, read the entire syllabus, no problem, no practical questions directly, he will ask this item. So make yourself sure in covering the syllabus, okay? Thank you very much. And again, my heartfelt thanks to Gold Mall CA for making me to interact with you. I am very thankful to these guys. Thank you very much. Thank you.